Okay, seeing that it's 7 o'clock, we'll open up the meeting of the Halifax Planning Board for May 16th, 2024. Present members are myself, Rick Murray, Amy Troop, and Brendan Elliott. Just so everybody's aware, the open meeting, the planning board is meeting. It is being recorded by Area 58 and can be reviewed on YouTube. All right, let's, let's.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda that's written here with an appointment with Trippy Cloud for 416 Plymouth Street Park Plaza, number 432A, and discussions to be taken on 400 Industrial Drive for Levy's Towing and some bills and minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to accept the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. All right, might as well just kick it off then. Unless anybody feels we should wait for the applicant to do the bills in minutes.
I think that we might want to give them a few minutes, right?
Yeah, we did that.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Okay.
Let's get the bills out of the way.
Make a motion that we pay the bill to PGB Engineering and Voice for 266 Mont Paunset Street, peer review 15, $1,520.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the first bill for PGB Engineering. Where have I got, where's my number here? There's another number on it. Oh, 24-105. And I have a second one here for PGB Engineering, number 24-105 for 395 Plymouth Street. Do I have a motion for $840?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve both 266 Mont Paunset Street and 1520 and 395 Mont Paunset Street for 840.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 We bet. I don't have them to look at.
Yeah, those are the only ones there. I'm trying to think if they were, if they were emailed to us. I don't remember seeing them.
I didn't see them.
Can I send that down?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's sent down.
Thank you. Okay, but it's even found it.
Later, bud.
See ya.
Bye.
Thanks, thank you. Where's the second one? Rub again, rub again.
This is just going to need to be sent out to peer review, right?
Yeah.
So what's that? Yes. Haven't we already seen this? Just for the proposed.
Let's wait until we open the discussion. These aren't filled. Put the packages, we're not going to lose them.
Can we open the discussion, have the discussion about the site plan while we wait for the applicant to potentially show up or not?
Well, we haven't can have it without him. You know, if he doesn't come in at all, we're still going to have a discussion.
Oh, okay.
I just thought. You know, if you find any, I didn't find any.
I didn't find anything, so.
I'll swap with you.
Oh, okay. I was going to motion it. I'll break him a second. Did you read these ones?
Yes, the one I wrote over here.
Oh, okay. I'm confused now. Okay.
I don't know. I'm afraid not five minutes early, 10 minutes late. I don't think so. For meetings, please, all right?
Do we sign in these?
Well, we have to vote on it, then we sign it. I'll, what's the first one? Is the April 4th the first one? Yes. I'll accept a motion to accept the minutes for April 4th, the Halifax Planning Board.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for April 4th, 2024. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the April 14th, is that the day? April 18th, minutes, you can understand what is going on in most, not all of it, but some of it, and I think that some of it should be noted in here, so I would ask that that would be updated. And she doesn't mention.
What specifically are you talking about? Someone to tell her, Ruth.
Oh, sorry. There's a place right here where it says that there's time missing, but there is also time.
Oh, inaudible, that's right. She said, she said when she was doing the, listening to the minutes, audibly shut off.
Right. But it's not all off. So some of the things that I said need to be put into the minutes.
Okay, I'll let her double check that.
And then also, I can come in and help her with it as well. And then also, in the second appointment structure, that none of my comments are in that as well, so I'd ask her to update that.
All right. All right, so let's put it in the form of a motion regarding the minutes of Thursday, April 18th. Amy, you want to do that?
I'll make a motion to have the minutes include Amy Troop's comments from both of the appointments for 416 Plymouth Street for the special permit on a sign and also on the site plan for the smoke shop at 432A, which is back tonight.
And the smoke shop?
Yep, part of 416 Park Plaza.
Okay, so then I'll request from Danielle that Thursday, April 18th, be reviewed on the tape and see if we can get some updates on that. There is a notation here, as Amy may mentioned, that the audio cut out there for a little while.
It's not all cut out, and then there's nothing of my talk in the next, and I find that to be not telling the whole story of the meeting.
More detail. How's that?
Yep.
More detail slash comments. How's that?
Sure.
Okay, so then, all those.
Second.
In favor, second, the motion is seconded. All those in favor of having the, the minutes of Thursday, April 18th, updated with more detail, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay.
All right, let's see, I'm at it shortly after, 11 minutes after 7:00. When do we get on to our first appointment? Doesn't appear as though we're going to be here. This is in regards to Trippy Cloud LLC, the application for a site plan review to open a smoke shop to be located at 432A Plymouth Street Park Plaza. New site plan has been submitted by Patrick Maloney, showing a division of the old church unit, as requested by the board. So maybe note that the site plan will become part of the permanent file for future reference.
Future generations to come.
I think we should be sending this out to peer review.
Okay, Monday night, I had an opportunity to speak with the town council, and town council said, basically, bottom line, the discussion went that this is for an occupancy permit. Why is the planning board even getting involved in it? And I said, well, to be honest with you, the discussion went back and forth about the change of use, and I'm paraphrasing, okay, because we've been having come to the meeting and explain it. But nevertheless, he said, this is the zoning enforcement officers' job to, whether or not to sign off on the occupancy permit. And he said, basically, it's his call. Now, I said, what about the change of use? He said, I think definition-wise, technically-wise, it is a change of use, if you want to split hairs. However, he did say that with an assembly, there's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put my back there. With an assembly, there's more restrictions, and it's more stricter for parking-wise than it is for a, for a smoke shop. He said, an awful lot of other towns, they have, they have square footage requirements. So if it's over 1,500 square feet, or if it's over 2,500 square feet, it, it has different definitions of what parking is required. But he said, he said it's, I told him there was a site plan, it, it was reviewed, not specifically for the smoke shop, but for the property in general. He, the building inspector counted the parking spaces and whatnot, included, and I guess he did make the comment that he thought there was enough parking for the square footage of the, of the buildings and the lot, and he never said, yes, I think, you know, I should give the occupancy permit or I shouldn't. But I don't know, that was, that was the discussion I had, that it's the building inspector's call. I, I don't, and then he went on to say that the bottom line, there should be no reason why, once the site review has been done and the peer review done, that every business go here needs a site plan review.
That's not a lie.
For a new business going in.
That's not a lie.
But this, I'm just telling you what the conversation was, whether true or not, that's, that's what he said. And he counted, he counted the spaces and whatnot.
Who did?
Shoot, the building inspector. And trying to think of the exact number, he said there was.
Shouldn't be on the site.
Just for devil's advocate purposes, we've been scratching and clawing to get an updated site plan from this business or this building owner.
For years.
For years. So now that we have one, wouldn't it just make sense to send it out to peer review just so that it's.
So who has to pay for this peer review?
The owner of the property.
Right?
Well, hasn't the owner of the property already paid for peer review?
I have no idea what they paid for or not paid for, and he didn't, but this, this whole entire thing has been divided into four, maybe five, over here, because the bead shop in front of Teekahs, that's one. We have the smoke shop trying to go in, that's two.
Is that what it is? The bead shop, is that what it is?
I'm taking that from you, but I don't.
Oh, oh, oh. Was it a shop? I had no, you know, crystals.
You know, that's what I know.
I haven't been in there.
Yeah, yeah, you haven't had my head.
Yeah, sure.
The Fight Zone, the Kennedy Dog Place, so that that is divided into four units. We don't see the bead shop there, so I'm not sure if it's still part of Teekahs or not, so I'll give it that. They have offices that are being leased individually now, and that's an aside in the window. They have a bakery that's put in here and has a, and again, I'm not asking for all of these uses to come in, however, that, and then the Halifax Nail Spa, and then the Rodney's Kitchen, and then we added this as a use, the pump building, and we added Nazaral's Farm as a use, okay? So we have one, two, three, four, five.
Potential.
New places in a building.
Potential.
And it goes by the amount of parking that is needed for each individual business. There's not been stormwater management when they took down all those trees, and there are giant puddles out in back Nazaral's, in front of the pump house, of broken up tar and a whole bunch of issues back there. They have not labeled out any of the directions around the building. They added a door over here to the left, a door here, a door here. There's a lot of changes. It needs to go to peer review, or you don't have a leg to stand on, on the other ones that you want to send to peer review. They're going to just come back and say, well, at 416 Park Plaza on Plymouth Street, you didn't make them go, so we're not going to go either, and they're going to stand in a quarter lot.
So, so back to my original sentence, statement, right, was just, you know, one of the, the practices that we've implemented, I think, pretty much the month that I joined, right, two, three years ago, whatever it was, every new site plan goes to peer review. It was just to eliminate all the potential.
Every, what did you say?
Every new site.
Every new site.
Went to peer review. It wasn't who is the applicant, you may as well take all the names off and just go, new site plan, peer review. So that was, that's step one, but then I think because we've been chasing this down for so long, why wouldn't we? Just so that we have the most updated legal stuff, like, and I agree, I get it with all, what all you're saying, but if you even get more, on a more simple level than that, it's just, this is a new site plan to which we've been chasing down for two years, let's get it off to peer review so that they can check the boxes or do whatever they do to it, and then it goes on to the building inspector, and he can do whatever he needs with it. But we've at least done our due diligence as our board to say, new site plan, peer review, updated.
Well, then, I personally would, would like to go back and check and to see in the meetings past, in the minutes, where, I know Mr. Brennan has come here and spoken about, about this site, and whether or not there was an actual written peer review, I don't, I don't recall it, I'd have to look it up.
From my knowledge, and maybe unless it was at a meeting, I wasn't there for it, but I guess my, my follow-up question would be, why wouldn't we just send it to peer review? Like, well, like what would a leading, for all the things that I just said, so to not bore everybody, why wouldn't we just send it off to peer review? Like, if it's like an innocent till proven guilty, give me a, give me a reason, a, a fighting chance at saying, we don't need to do that.
What's peer review going to do that's going to have anything to do with these businesses in this existing building that's been there for years and years?
Since, no, I have to, zoning, this building has been there.
I think the peer review, the peer review is going to take the most recent site plan and bring it up to speed, bring it up to code, bring it up to file, so that we can have, because to your point, you said you were going to make a note that this was going to be labeled for future years to come for the file. Well, if that's the case, if this is going to be the document that we use for future generations, then this needs to be, to send to peer review. I just don't know why there's a hesitancy for that.
Well, the, the other thing is, if peer review isn't required by the application of an occupancy permit, does it, does it boil down to, are we singling this person out? Can we go down the street and say the exact same thing to other businesses coming in?
I think I'm missing something, and it might have been a conversation that I wasn't here for, but for the last two years, we've been fighting for an updated site plan.
Right.
And now we have one, and now we're trying to come up with all that, why not to send it to peer review?
Because we had a peer review, even though we used the site plans that were available to us.
No, I thought we had a peer review on this individual section for Nazaral's, but that didn't include the entire building.
We had done for the kennels, too, but.
But not as an entire site plan. So if this is going to be the document that we're going to use moving forward for this entire building and all future businesses that go in, and this is the most updated site plan, why wouldn't we send it to peer review? I keep, I feel like we keep coming up with reasons why we shouldn't.
So in the meantime, we're saying that this smoke shop can't go in that building until peer review looks at the plan. But according to Attorney Huxham and the building inspector, they don't have to come to the planning board to get an occupancy permit.
And that's what the question was. Why are they coming to the planning board to begin with?
But they're not here anyway, so it doesn't really matter.
Right. Did you tell Rich Huxham that there's multiple new sections that were created?
And the question was to, is it the same footprint? Did they?
That's not how I love it.
Well, I'm just, you asked me a question, I'm answering you.
That's not how I love it.
What would the?
Okay, I thought you asked me a question.
What would the downside be? What would the downside be to sending it to peer review? Like, what's it? I don't, I don't understand why we're hesitating to just check this out, like if anybody were to, I don't know. I think I'm missing something. Because I'm, you know me, as long as it makes sense, got my vote.
So whoever has to pay for the peer review, that would be the, the property owner. So does he have to agree to send the peer review, or who's, are we going to get a bill from, from Pat Brennan, and who's going to pay it?
He has to set up a revolving fund, just like everybody else in town.
Yeah, I know that, but is he going to do that?
Especially.
It took long enough to, it took long enough to get this plan.
So, well, that's why I'm concerned, right? Is, is it took forever? I mean, all we were asking for was a simple updated site plan, and it took us over two years to get it, and now we finally have it, and for some reason, we're like letting them off the hook and skirting around the peer review. I don't know if there's like a chest of gold buried back there that I wasn't privy to. I don't know what the, I don't know why we wouldn't. And if he doesn't, if he, if he's willing to finally give us an updated site plan, then we send it to peer review.
Like, there's the kicker right there, too, because remember, Mr. Nazaral had to pay for the last site plan because Maloney wouldn't, and all of a sudden, this shows up. But, but, but bottom line, you're going to ask him, you're going to ask him to pay for the revolving?
He's a business owner and a building owner in town that he's bringing in new occupants into, and we finally have an updated site plan that we are going to use as the staple document for all future businesses that go in here. I think it is, it's a no-brainer. I don't even see an ounce of, and if he's unwilling to do that, then we will have to continue to say to all future businesses that come in, we would love for you to come here. However, this needed to go to peer review, and it has not been paid for by the building owner, so therefore, until that gets done, you don't get to come in. We have turned away four, we have turned away four different, since I've been here, four different businesses to go in here just to get this document.
Right.
Now we have this document, and we're skirting around the peer review. I don't understand.
Okay, so what, what happens now when, you just, for an example now, if the building inspector comes out and says, no, it's an occupancy permit, it's, there is no need for the smoke shop to get a, a site plan review or a peer review, it's just for the occupancy permit, and I find, meaning the building inspector finds that it's a business in a business zone, you know, whatnot, and says, signs off on an occupancy permit.
Good.
Because he says, he makes that decision.
Yeah.
And then we're still going to force him to.
That's awesome, because this, this building has been changed since the previous peer review has been done on this, on this site. So therefore, because this, because this property has been changed since the last time a peer review has been done on this site, then if the building inspector wants to sign off on the smoke shop, God bless you, we still have a responsibility to the town for our records to have the most updated site plan approved through a peer review officially, to make this the official accepted document moving forward. Otherwise, we can just pick and choose when to send people to peer review or not, and three years ago, we decided we weren't going to do that anymore.
But, no, 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 the peer review for a new site plan, for a new site, was, that's the way it should be, because prior to that, it was pick and choose who you're going to have, who you're not going to do it.
I just, I don't think I'm being malicious or picking on the guy. I mean, I don't even really have a dog in the fight. I just, from what my understanding was of the precedent that we had set three years ago, to make sure that we didn't open ourselves up to any kind of lawsuits, it was peer review for all new site plans, we'll deal with the next step, the next step, but there's no point in talking about the next step until that peer review gets done. And then, once it's done, good news, because hopefully, that building is here for when my kids open a business.
But the site, I mean, I mean, maybe not listening, the site plan itself is involved with the, with the building, the parking lot, and outside the building. What does that have to do with Trippy Cloud's smoke shop?
Because it's going into this building, and it does not have an updated peer review approved site plan. That's what it has to do with it.
And if the building inspector comes out and says he doesn't need one for his occupancy permit, we're going to force him to do one anyway?
Because, I would say yes, because we need to check the box, if this is going to be the document in court, because then moving forward for any, get rid of the smoke shop or whatever.
If the board members then, is it something that we want to send a letter off to the building inspector, too? I mean, we're, we're putting, basically assuming what he's going to say or not say, you know, should we, we get an actual?
I don't think the building inspector has anything to do with.
I'm just telling you, that's what, that's what Tom Huxham said.
Well, I don't think that town council knows how many extra places are there now, so I don't.
You're right, because he was talking.
Thank you.
He was, he was talking in general, why is.
I rest my case.
A situation like this going before the planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Really basically doesn't have anything to do with the planning board, it's up to the building inspector to make that decision.
And does town council know that we've been chasing the building owner down for two years to get an updated site plan to which we have not been, our requests have not been met, and therefore, multiple businesses have been forced to walk away? And now that we have one sitting in front of us, it's almost our due diligence, it's like, it's our responsibility to go, peer review it is, and then, and if you've gotten this far, why wouldn't you, you're at 26 miles out of 26.2, why wouldn't you just finish the race? And to your point, instead of speculating what a building inspector would say, or even what a building owner would say, request that it needs to go to peer review so that it lines up with the rest of our process and due diligence and protocol, and let the business owner decide what his next action plan.
Why don't we do that, then? Why don't we send a letter off to the Mr. Maloney or the property owner and request him that he, he supply the, the blog with a updated peer review of the property app?
So one step, make it even easier. I make a motion that we send this site plan out for peer review, and then the business owner, Mr. Maloney, will then get notification that he has to pay for.
Normally, before you send something to peer review for a site plan, you get people who own the site to set up a revolving account before you send them.
Well, that will be part of the motion, that's easy. We can say owner of 416 Plymouth Street Park Plaza is to set up a revolving account so that the town can have the site plan that is sitting in front of us right here, here engineered, in order for us to go forward with site plan approvals, which include.
And all future businesses that could go in.
So just as a reminder, Chapter 16728, Site Plan Requirements, no permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional apartment, multi-dwelling, municipal or school building, or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building or lot, not therefore used for such purposes, except in conformity with a site plan bearing an endorsement of approval of the planning board.
Because, I would say yes, because we need to check the box if this is going to be the document in court, because then moving forward for any, get rid of the smoke shop or whatever.
If the board members then, is it something that we want to send a letter off to the building inspector too? I mean, we're, we're putting basically assuming what he's going to say or not say. You know, should we, we get an actual?
I don't think the building inspector has anything to do with sending it.
I'm just telling you that's what, that's what Tom Huxham said.
Well, I don't think that town council knows how many extra places are there now. So I don't.
You're right, because he was talking.
Thank you.
He was, he was talking in general. Why is a situation like this going before the planning board? Really basically doesn't have anything to do with the planning board. It's up to the building inspector to make that decision.
And does town council know that we've been chasing the building owner down for two years to get an updated site plan to which we have not been, our requests have not been met? And therefore, multiple businesses have been forced to walk away? And now that we have one sitting in front of us, it's almost our due diligence. It's like, it's our responsibility to go, peer review it is. And then, and if you've gotten this far, why wouldn't you? You're at 26 miles out of 26.2. Why wouldn't you just finish the race? And to your point, instead of speculating what a building inspector would say or even what a building owner would say, request that it needs to go to peer review so that it lines up with the rest of our process and due diligence and protocol? And let the business owner decide what his next action plan.
Why don't we do that then? Why don't we send a letter off to the Mr. Maloney or the property owner and re, and request him that he, he supply the, the board with a updated peer review of the property at?
So one step, make it even easier. I make a motion that we send this site plan out for peer review and then the business owner, Mr. Maloney, will then get notification that he has to pay for it.
Normally, before you send something to peer review for a site plan, you get the people who own the site to set up a revolving account before you send them.
Well, that will be part of the motion. That's easy. We can say owner of 416 Plymouth Street, Park Plaza, is to set up a revolving account so that the town can have the site plan that is sitting in front of us right here, here engineered in order for us to go forward with site plan approvals, which include.
And all future businesses that could go in.
So just as a reminder, Chapter 16728, Site Plan Requirements. No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional apartment, multi-dwelling municipal or school building or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged, and no such use shall be expanded or established in an existing building or lot not therefore used for such purposes, except in conformity with a site plan bearing an endorsement of approval of the planning board. Said site plan shall show the owner of record location, zone boundary lines, easements or other legal restrictions, exact location of buildings on the lot with side, front and rear dimensions, lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways, location of off-street parking, lighting, utility systems, surface drainage, traffic flow, location and nature of open spaces with specific notations as to landscaping, locusts plan, and other details deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impacts consistent with the purposes of the chapter. They need to submit nine copies of their site plan to the town clerk.
Okay, why don't we make reference to that then? What is that, 167, what is it?
It's Site Plan, Chapter 16728.
Unless we feel like.
We'll take that in full promotion.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
We'll send it to, we'll send it both to, I would say, the building inspector and I would say, also say Mr. Maloney, the property owner, so that they know what's, what's going on.
This is an elected board and the building inspector doesn't have any decision on over a while whether or not we take our job that we take an oath of office to do to make sure that this is correct.
So, I would. He's the one that makes the decision whether we issue a occupancy permit. And should we make it made aware that this process is being done in order for him to make a decision on the occupancy permit or not? Has nothing to do with what our, how is our route. I'm not questioning his, you know, type, anything like that.
I couldn't agree any more. So I, I'm just saying, so that we are uniform in the way in which we conduct ourselves. We just say, we have a new site plan of an old building that has changed multiple times. And now that we've been provided a new site plan per our process, we need to send it out to peer review. And we can notify every resident of Halifax if we want. It doesn't really matter. The point is, is we have a new site plan that's going to have future businesses going into it. It needs to go out to a peer review, especially if this is going to be the official site plan document used for all future development in that property. So unless we're, I mean, the only reason I could think of why we wouldn't do this is if it's going to somehow get somebody in trouble. And I don't, I don't know how, why, why we, I don't, I don't know who or what or why, but I just, I feel like if it were, I feel like this is what we've asked for. We've been asking for a site plan for years and we finally got it. And now we're at the finish line and we're going to just skip one of the most important certification parts of our process because.
And the only thing I disagree with that is you word skip. If in fact, it's not required, you know, we're not skipping over. But I, I agree with it, I, you know, if you're the last one.
I think it's an easy move to check. It's just such a, because then we never have to talk about this ever again. Because then the next business that comes in, we can go, oh yeah, hey, remember back in May? We got this done? Let's, uh, let's pull out that site plan because it's already been peer reviewed. So what are some of the changes that you're looking at making? And what's a special permit that you got to do? But now, the next business that comes in, we're going to have to go, oh yeah, that site plan that we got, that we fought for for two years, that we just at the last minute decided not to send to peer review? It just, it's going to muddy the water in the future.
Okay, so just so, why don't we make that in the form of a motion?
Okay.
Okay, and the other kicker is, we have to notify.
167.
Yeah, 28.
Sorry, 28. Okay, go ahead.
We have to notify Trippy Cloud that he's, he's not going to be able to occupy the, the store until Mr. Maloney provides the board with a peer review.
The nice part about that is if we go back and re-watch the last meeting when they were here, I told them that that was the process. I said, we cannot move forward until you get us a peer review, I mean, a site plan, a new site plan that we can then send out for peer review and then we can discuss, right? And so that, that's actually lineup, because he was like, so you're telling me I can't move forward with my tobacco license? And we were like, not until we get an updated site plan that then needs to go out to peer review. And then as soon as you get that, we can continue the discussion. And I said, and we want you in town. And he was like, okay. And then when we got this, I was like, all right, we're making progress. And here we are, right about to check that box. So if it's okay, I'd like to make a motion that we send the most recent site plan received for.
416.
416 Plymouth Street.
Is it dated on the back?
Dated April 29th, 2024.
Oh, I think that should be included.
Yeah, to send it out to, for our official peer review, inciting our bylaw 16728, as well as send out correspondence to the property owner, Mr. Maloney, our building inspector, as well as the business owner of Trippy Cloud LLC. And then as soon as it's done, we can.
To set up the revolving.
And we would need to request that the property owner, Mr. Maloney, set up a revolving account to pay for the peer review.
167.
Okay, I have a, any further discussion, Rick?
No.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. I'll ask for a roll call vote on the motion. Brendan?
Brendan Elliott, aye.
Amy Trup?
Aye.
Rick?
Rick Mary, yes.
Rick Candy, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Cool. That'll be clean, moving forward.
All right, this is, this is sticky here. We got bills, we got minutes, oh, signatures, I got a folder here. Please, I'm required, I'm requiring or not requiring a site plan review for 400 Industrial.
Do you know what 400 Industrial is currently? Because we don't have the file here. I can look it up.
400 Industrial.
Yeah, let me look at it.
Can I ask a question about a?
400?
Yes.
It's on a property that I heard, did that landscaping company that we went through all that process on 106 pull up? Yeah, like, but didn't they clear all the stuff?
Isn't it, is that definite or is it?
Well, that was my question. I don't want anything on the record, so like a definite.
It was at the zoning board.
Oh, and he said he's withdrawing?
That's what I heard.
But like, didn't they spend a lot of money to clear all that land? And like, have all the conversations about the trees they were going to keep with the neighbors?
And the conservation area.
Yeah.
Engineering.
All that drainage.
Engineering, everything else.
And they just.
Well, they, all they did was clear the lot. That's all they did.
Yeah, but they cleared it. You can see all the stream beds now. That's the crime.
That's interesting. That's why I just, I was wondering why some things hadn't gone up. And then I heard that they had a change of heart.
And the poor lady in the back that was begging us to save trees. Her house is now like in full sight of 106.
So, discussion slash action to be taken on our agenda. 400 Industrial Drive, Felipe's Towing are looking to run an online car selling business. A dealer license application has, has been filled out as a dealer license is still needed even for online sales. Planning board verification is needed to either require a site plan review or not require it. See form to sign off located, oh, in the black signature form. So, to the board of selectmen, does not require, what's on this? What's 400? What's on the amount? I have no idea.
It's DMC Racing, Dennis McPherson's painting.
Where is that? Like opposite of?
If you go in Industrial Drive, you know, on the right, right? You go Industrial Drive, it's, I believe, the second building on the left.
Oh, before the, before the car.
It might be the third.
Maybe, I think it's the third.
It's on, it's third.
Yeah, I think Carbone's there. Is Carbone still there? I think he's next to Carbone. You have, he's had the sandblasting place up front, but he's not there anymore. That's a.
Oh, the one at the very top of the hill?
Yeah, well, the big giant one we used to have sandblasting. And then I think it was Carbone next to, I'm not sure. But he's, he's second or third building down the left.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that picture of this field car isn't coming up.
So, let me ask then, is?
400.
Is the?
I mean, I, is there any more information on an application or, or nothing?
Oh, there is ownership and all that kind of stuff on it. So this is a good sized building then? Since this is, we're guessing.
What's that, DMC?
Yeah, well, yeah.
So it says to buy vehicles, this is basically what you said, right? To buy vehicles from the auction and then sell them back to the auction? Cars will not be displayed. It doesn't say they won't be stored. It said they won't be displayed. I think we need to have them come in and ask them questions. You know what I mean? Before we can decide any of that, because it's, I mean, like.
It's the fourth building back on the left, behind Johnny Macaroni's. DMC Racing Motorsport.
Fourth building?
Yeah, just before the Machine and Design and Kled Street Services.
So, well, those are the questions that they're looking for, for us to, does it require a site plan? This is to verify the following application. Does it, does not require a new site plan? Required a new site plan for which one has been approved? Section 2, no restrictions on this permit? Or request following restrictions on permit?
Well, if they were, so the way I interpret displaying cars, I think of like a car dealership on 44. So they're saying that's not the case. But if you're going to need a warehouse space for an automotive online, you buy a car, you bring it, you store it in that warehouse and then somebody comes and picks it up, whoever bought it, or they ship it out. Then if you're storing cars, don't you have to have like drainage and all that stuff properly?
Well, if it's Dennis's building, he has paint in the cars. I don't know where he would be going, but he already has all that set up inside because he paints racing cars.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
Sweet.
He's very talented.
He builds the racing cars.
Oh, and he paints.
He builds tracks.
Thank you.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Sweet.
He's one of the, one of the best in the country.
Okay. That's sweet.
I forgot that part that he builds them to.
Well, that's mainly what he does. I don't think he's a painter.
Probably ships them over to Paraguay, right?
Yeah, I don't know if there's another shop down the street that paints similar.
Something like that.
He builds. That's what he does. He's just a, he builds these guys.
Sweet.
I stand corrected.
Cool.
My grandson works this, that's all.
Ah, there you go.
So, so then the building is currently being used.
Yeah.
To store.
Car stuff.
Well, he's, it's, he builds, he builds.
You see, we're guessing. And like, like you said, that's what you read. Makes no sense to me. To buy vehicles from the auction and sell them back to the auction. Okay, why would you do that? Maybe I just don't know how the business.
Or potentially, so you buy them from the auction, you put them online and if they don't sell within a certain amount of days, you bring them back to the auction depending on what you can get for price.
So then why are they selling them back to the auction?
If they don't sell them on retail, online.
Oh.
Cars will not be displayed.
But it doesn't say not stored, so, and I'm, I'm okay with that building having cars there. I know it's set up for that, but.
Like, how many cars could you put in that building?
A lot. It's usually like stuffed.
It's gigantic, isn't it?
I've never been inside.
Oh, you haven't? It's, it's unbelievable. It's all, it's all cars and tons of people working on.
10 cars? I'm, I have no idea.
More towards like the 25, 30, but maybe not that much.
So if they brought them in and didn't sell them?
They'd sell them back to the.
They just sell them back in auction, either the same auction or someplace different?
Depending on, I mean, think about if you were to buy, let's say you bought 10 used cars from an auction two years ago, right? And then when that whole microchip issue came up and they were using used cars like crazy, you'd make 300% on your auction car investment. I mean, because used cars were like, they're in desperate need of them because they can't get new cars in because of the microchip issue. So if they were buying stuff from the auction to put all those crazy dealer stickers on them and stick them out on the street, that's obviously not what they're trying to do. But if he's like, I'm going to buy them from the auction, try to sell them. If I don't, I'm going to bring them back to the auction. So that's really just a holding place?
Okay, so it's not a?
But again, that's speculation. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know until you have them come in and say, you know, you actually do.
I think it's just.
100%.
I think that would just be a request for an appointment, just to clarify. Like, hey man, what are you going to do?
Yeah. It would almost make sense that they'd have to recognize the distinction between you opening up a used car lot as opposed to, we're trying to flip cars and we don't, we're going to send them back to auction. They're taking the chance of buying and paying a fee at an auction and not selling and having to pay a fee again to put it back on the auction.
I mean, there's got to be a whole used car auction market that I don't have any exposure to, but there's got to be a business to it.
I mean, commercials on TV are, it's crazy, constant.
Yeah, so you think about all that like bartering, like world that people make so much money, like buying and selling used stuff. It's like, there's obviously a market for it in, in vehicles.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I think we should have them come in for an appointment and tell us a little bit more in detail. Like, is DMC staying there and they're joining that? Because it sounds like your grandson works there, right, Rick?
Well, just a few hours.
Well, I'm just saying, like, so it doesn't seem like they're moving out or leaving.
I doubt he's leaving.
Right, so is he joining there? Where are the cars going to be? Are they going to be outside? Well, that's why I'm saying we need them to come in. That's.
Do we want a motion?
That's one thing too, but it's Felipe's Towing.
Yeah.
Okay, now let's throw towing into the middle of the mix.
Right.
I think you're right. We need more detail.
Yeah, I think.
Because I think if you.
We're guessing.
He's probably going to tow them from the auction.
Yeah.
Right? Because that's how he's going to get them.
So you're, you're, you're 100% sure it's that, it's that property that he wants to use?
I just Googled it, like I Googled it and asked what it popped up as.
I looked it up on the SS's field.
A motion, please.
I'll make a motion that we ask Felipe's Towing, Gabriel Panero, to come in to our next meeting to explain or provide a clarification as to the manner of his future business in that building.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second regarding the application. But 400 Industrial Drive, Felipe's Towing, all those in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Cool.
What else do we have there? Folks, male correspondents, just so I make the board aware, Town of East Bridgewater, they have notices of public hearing of approval on Cross Street. Middleborough, notice of public hearing, Town of Pembroke.
345.
An approval for site plan review for 345 Washington Street. I know there's a public hearing on Habermark in the Town of Plinton. I notice a public hearing for amendment to the Plinton zoning bylaw. Our next scheduled meeting is June 6th.
Where's the Plinton one?
What's that?
Plinton has a public hearing at the Deborah Sampson Meeting Room of the Plinton Townhouse, 5 Palmer Road, Plinton on, oh, it's already happened on May 7th. But the, that's okay. Hearing for the notice for amendment to the Plinton zoning law was, add the words mobile home and trailers to a zoning bylaw, which doesn't really say the rest of the bylaw, so we'd have to have that in front of us. But it already happened. We don't have on here in our correspondence, but we did get correspondence. I saw us all get it from Michael Peasy. Does everybody recall that in your email? On 265 and 266 Mont Ponce Street, the Thorne Dyke Development Project. He said that below, please find an email that was sent to the Halifax Selectmen this morning regarding significant concerns for the Thorne Dyke project. We have tried to attend various planning board meetings that don't always coincide with our work schedules or canceled and rescheduled, but we're direct abutters. And they said, dear Town of Halifax Selectmen, we are reaching out to you regarding the development of a massive apartment complex by Thorne Dyke Development on 266 and 265 Mont Ponce Street, Halifax, Mass. We are direct abutters to these properties and we have significant concerns regarding the building of a three-story apartment complex adjacent to our property. Although this street is a main route, it is generally a quiet area. This project is going to drastically change our neighborhood as a whole due to the added traffic, noise, lighting, et cetera. traffic, noise, lighting, et cetera. The property at 266 Mon Ponsett Street is a 1.2-acre property, and Thorne Dyke's planning to jam a huge apartment complex three stories high and a 12-car garage right on top of us. We were told by the Town of Halifax Building Inspector that the garage will be five feet from our property line and driveway. How is this legal, and why were we not notified of this? The neighborhood here is extreme wetlands, and we have significant concerns, putting an enormous septic system for a three-story apartment right next door to our home and property. We can hear sump pumps running in our neighborhood because of extremely high water tables. We personally had to pay thousands of dollars one recent spring as the water table got so high from the rain that our leaching field was pushing water into our septic tank and I, into our basement. We have lived in this neighborhood for 50 years and know that there have been extreme water issues with, issues with several neighbors and at the condo complex in the neighborhood." That's the Lyden Lane one they're referring to. "There has been a single-family home at 266 Mon Ponsett Street for hundreds of years. Why change to a three-story apartment complex now? In a small town like Halifax, this is like putting up a skyscraper. A local builder first bought this property at the, at the O'Brien Family Auction in 2019, and he was denied putting up two townhouses because of zoning issues. Why is it now okay to put up a three-story apartment complex on this small property with a 12-car garage? Other concerns regarding this project are lighting issues, as our living room and bedroom are facing this property. We also have serious concerns with the entrance and exit to this complex as it is literally a few feet from our driveway. This is a major concern as we have a new teenage driver and an elderly parent living with us. There will also be major traffic issues for the entire neighborhood, which Thorne Dyke is underestimating. The largest intersection in this town is only a few hundred feet away, which is already jam-packed in the morning and evening commutes without hundreds of additional people living in the area. We are going to lose all privacy in our backyard where our patio and pool have been for decades as this massive structure overlooks our property. Another concern is the pickleball court being constructed right across the street at 265 Mon Ponsett Street location. These courts will have extreme sound issues as our home is directly across the street. I strongly believe that all of the above items and concerns fall under Massachusetts nuisance law for privacy and the right to use and enjoy our land. Overall, this project would be life-changing for us and our town neighborhood. This project has caused significant anxiety for us and concern for our overall health and well-being. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us to discuss. Thank you, Michael and Deborah Peasy, 254 Mon Ponsett Street."
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, that's the one that, uh, they did claim that they talked to and had...
Yeah, they said they were talking.
Nice and nice. Yeah, nice and nice, so...
Unfortunately, town voted on that all the way.
Actually, the state hasn't approved it yet, so we can hope that they won't.